...two thousand and nineteen upon the recognition of Councilors Lysef Klein, Lloyd Mitch Dwight, and Janeway Shara. Nineteen one seventy six, an ordinance prohibiting the use of face surveillance systems being ordained by the City Council of the City of North Hampton, the City Council's amendments follows. At the ordinances of the city hereby amended by inserting as Chapter two ninety, Section one, the following ordinance titled prohibition on the use of face recognition systems by municipal agencies, officers, and employees. Section one, definitions, for the purpose of this section, A, face surveillance refers to an automated or semi-automated process that assists in identifying an individual by capturing information about an individual based on the physical characteristics of an individual's face. B, face surveillance system is any computer software or application or other technology that performs face surveillance. C, city officials shall include all officials and employees of the city, whether elected or appointed. Section two, prohibition, it shall be unlawful for any city official to expend any city resources to obtain, retain, access, or use any face surveillance system. Section three, miscellaneous, A, three years from the month of enactment of this ordinance, this ordinance shall be placed on the agenda of the City Council for such amendments as councilors may propose and the council may adopt. B, nothing in this chapter shall be construed to limit any individual's rights under state or federal law. C, the provisions of this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. Motion to approve this, please.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor.
Klein.
Klein, Dwight. Okay, so, um, discussion.
Yeah.
Counselor Dwight?
Um, this, what, uh, as you heard in, uh, uh, counselor, spelled differently, Newman's presentation, but also as you heard from the public as well, we have, um, well, historically, our technology has far outstripped our policies and laws providing protections as that technology advances. Um, are, in this instance, a facial recognition technology which we've experienced, for instance, for me, in order to get on my phone, my phone looks at me and says, you're okay. The, you, if you're on Facebook, you can see that it will automatically start tagging people based on facial recognition characteristics. You'll also note that it fails about a third of the time. There are no policies currently providing protections or oversight of this, of this technology that's moving rapidly and changing rapidly. The article, I think one of the articles that Bill Newman was referring to was in New York Times, just did a rather extensive report on how Chinese, the Chinese government is using, uh, uh, facial recognition technology and AI basically to monitor every aspect of their citizens' lives. Now, one would hope that that's not something that would play out here, although, uh, private businesses, of course, are doing that with the intent of trying to sell you something or sell you as a commodity. But in this case, we're concerned particularly about the fact that these instruments can be used to limit, restrict the freedom and liberties that we, we, we were sworn to protect. That's our job. That's what the oath that we take. And, um, the sponsors have been concerned about this before we even, I think, discussed this in concert about what do we do about this and, and in conversations with Bill Newman and other members of the ACLU. This proposal was originally much longer and probably more prohibitive. We ran up against the, you know, the debate that we've heard ongoing, uh, as ever since the establishment, the charter about what, to what extent do we have the authority to provide directives for, uh, employees of the city. In this case, this has been pared down substantially, but the fact, the effect is hopefully the same. And that is prohibiting the resources which we do govern, which we do have the authority over, uh, being applied towards using this software. There's a three-year window on this, a, a, a three-year revisit, basically, a redo opportunity for a future council to, um, discuss as the technology and possibly, hopefully, the state law and federal laws start to catch up with the technology as it exists. But this is the stopgap that, this is the, a minimal stopgap. Um, and it's, it almost, it has a little more weight than an actual resolution, but the resolution would, would probably scream louder, at least one that I proposed, that would just say that the employment of facial recognition software, um, while it could prove in some instances to be a valuable tool, in some cases for law enforcement, the potential harm that's available, in my mind, trumps that, and pardon the use of that term. But, so, we offer this at this late stage, at this eleventh hour, uh, in the hopes that , uh, the council will agree that there needs to be, and, and, by the way, I should emphasize, we had long conversations with the mayor and the chief of police. There is no, uh, face, the facial recognition software currently being employed by the city, um, notwithstanding the fact that there is possibly desire at some point to use it. They were very, I mean, it was, I was, I was grateful for their conversations and it was in the hopes that those conversations, we would come up with something that there seemed to be mutual agreement on. And I think that is this, and, and we shall find out during the course of the conversation, but I do hope that, uh, my colleagues will join me, uh, in supporting this and hopefully, and in fact, I would even request two readings for obvious reasons, because I would like you all to have the opportunity, who have also weathered the debates around security cameras and other things, basically knowing the, the thrust of the debate and the discussion that will compels us to, to present this to you today. I would, I would appreciate having the opportunity to know your ascent or descent before we close out our session.
Mm-huh.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Shara?
Um, as we heard from Mr. Newman and Counselor Dwight and, and others this evening, the error rate, um, for this kind of software is too high and it's discriminatingly so. The, there isn't, um, a margin of error that's applied equally across the entire population. So, um, and also, as Counselor Dwight was just saying, this technology is moving incredibly fast, for better and for worse. It's improving and becoming more accurate, um, but the scope of it is also expanding. Um, and at this, in this time of very rapidly changing technology, sometimes these sticky hard ethical debates and the protections that Counselor Dwight was just talking about, they can't keep pace with that technological change. And just because we can do something doesn't mean that we should do something. And, uh, history is really riddled with the bones of those horrible ethical mistakes. Um, so, this is really just asking that we, as a city, impose our own brakes so that we can be really thoughtful, um, about the implementation of these new tools.
Thank you. The other sponsor perhaps speak to it, or any other member of the council? No? Counsel Bidwell?
Um, yes, I'd, I'd, I'd very much like to speak to this. This makes perfect sense to me. I'm very much persuaded by the, the information that is out there about the unreliability problems with this technology. Uh, and I agree with, with Counselor Dwight that in something like this, you need to look at the probability of harm versus probability of benefit. And in this case, uh, given the developing state of the technology and the lack of other regulatory regimes, uh, I think the, the potential for harm far outweighs what we understand to be the potential for benefit. But what I also appreciate about this is the fact that, uh, it builds in, uh, a look in three years, so that those of you who will be on the council three years from now, including those in the audience, uh, will have an opportunity to, to look then at what will no doubt be a very different state of the technology. And hopefully, a different state of, uh, the ability to build in safeguards, but we just don't know that now. But I would, I would hope that in three years, there would be an open-mindedness to, again, take a fresh look at that, uh, the benefits of, the benefits of, of use of the technology and, uh, and the potential harm of the technology. The calculus could be very different then, but right now, it's clearly on the side of, uh, uh, not permitting this technology for use in, in our city at this time.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Nash hasn't spoken, would you yield to him?
Sure.
Counsel Nash?
Yeah, I want to voice my support for this and for, in, uh, from the perspective of the pleasure of being anonymous. You know, that there is, you know, right now, we are here, we're being recorded, but we're serving as public figures. And there's times where, you know, you're walking down the street and it's so nice that, you know, nobody's looking at you or taking you in, or maybe you bump into a neighbor and they're recognizing you because they're using traditional facial recognition stuff by using their eyes, you know, that, um, that the, that it's, that it's really wonderful to have places where we aren't subject to being recognized. And, um, so that's why I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Dwight?
I, I, I just wanted to say that actually, I, I meant to mention that in the course of the discussion of legislative matters, Counsel Murphy brought up a very good point. So what scares you more, the fact that this doesn't work or the fact that it will work? And that was very telling, and he was right. The fact that it will work in many cases depends on who's interpreting what working is, as, as, as Counsel Newman said in air quotes. And he described, and I don't want to speak for you, but I understand your reticence to speak.
I'm not speaking well.
Yes, it was, he was more terrified of the prospect of it working. And that caused him concern, and that prompted in me a, a different way of even looking at this. The, the fact that it, if it actually, and that's what they're doing in China right now, and leaps and bounds, they're developing biometric reservoir of information that is becoming more and more and more precise. They tend to be more culturally homogeneous, so they prob, their error rate might not be as great as ours. But the fact is that when it does work, that literally is dominance, control, and oversight of individuals who would probably, at least in this country, and hopefully in this community, believe that that's a, something they don't want to concede or give over to a government. So, that's the bigger issue ultimately.
Thank you. Counsel LeBarge?
Yes, um, I'm supporting this a hundred percent, just like I did with the surveillance cameras. And I think in, in due respect, the language on here, I'm very, very pleased with, plus I'm very happy to hear, which I knew this had occurred, that, um, Chief Jody Casper didn't have a problem with this, or did she?
I, I, I don't want to speak for the chief in that respect. I've never heard, uh, whether she signed off on this or not. And the mayor may have a better sense of that, but I don't want, I didn't want to protect that Chief Casper, um, is in agreement with this, is, is this, that she definitely participated and was helpful in, in, in developing this.
With language with it, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we took into consideration, um, many of her expressed concerns, but I don't think we met all of them. But I just want to be clear on that.
Okay, all right. But anyways, I'm happy that she at least was partly involved with it, and I'm happy with the language, and I will support this.
Other comments? If I may, I'd like to just suggest some technical amendments, um, which I think helped the ordinance accomplish what it's, I think, meant to do. They're all in Section three. Let's describe them informally first, if I may. First, Section three A. Um, it says, three years from the month of enactment of this ordinance, this ordinance shall be placed on the agenda of the City Council for such amendments as councilors may propose and the council, council may adopt. Um, the issue with this is that it, it's phrased in somewhat unusual way because, of course, in amendments, in ordinances, we mean it to mean either the code book, the ordinances that have been passed into law, and it's, it's like Wikipedia, we edit it from time to time. And then we have an ordinance like tonight, which is an ordinance which would amend the code book, and so we kind of mix up those, those terms perhaps. Um, we can't just put amendments to an ordinance on a future agenda, that would have to be an ordinance that goes through the process like this one has. So it's somewhat problematic to say that in, in a date somewhat certain, we're going to consider amendments. So I think the sense of it is you just want it to be reviewed by the council around that time. So I would suggest that the word such amendments as councilors may propose and the council may adopt, uh, be deleted, and simply we, we substitute the word review, such that it read, three years from the month of enactment of this ordinance, this ordinance shall be placed on the agenda of the City Council for review. That's kind of the first one. Let me do them all together, because otherwise I have to write down who first and second always. Uh, B, nothing in this chapter, nothing in this section, better, not chapter, section is this, this area. Um, unless, no, 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 is this an entirely new chapter of the code? Where does this fall in the code book?
That was amended by inserting as Chapter two ninety, Section one, so I think you're correct in saying that it's, um...
So there is no Chapter two ninety at all, is that right? Okay.
As Chapter two ninety, yes.
So that doesn't, all right, so never mind that one. Uh, chapter is fine. Uh, but C, I'm going to bring in conformance with A, the provisions of this ordinance shall be effective immediately, not upon passage, but rather upon enactment, because either the mayor has assigned it or it's otherwise become law before it's effective. Those are just technical amendments, um, which I will offer formally now.
I will move those amendments.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Um, I want to...
Just point of, of, if you're amending, it seems like you have made the motion and...
Right, I would second that.
Right, so, just so that we know.
Okay. So, thank, so, you're correct, I think I did make that, and so Bill Dwight seconds it, Counsel Dwight seconds it. I said Bill Dwight, because I'm putting people's initials. Um, any discussion on those amendments? Any questions, everyone understanding amendment? Okay, commute them with a voice vote. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of adopting amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, so those are approved. Any further discussion on this? Um, I'll express my appreciation for the work that's gone into this. I, I read the other day, um, it was, it was in the Wall Street Journal, which I do not regularly read, um, when I'm out on the golf course lighting my cigar with money. Reading the journal like I do, you know, no, I was researching this and it came up, uh, it was a report, you know, not from, uh, from an industry research group, I assume they researched this, maybe other things, uh, about surveillance as a technology. And, um, it appears that, according to this report, that by twenty twenty-one, the estimate is there will be one billion, with a B, billion surveillance devices, whether they're all cameras or whatever, in the world, one billion. So that's interesting, what's the population of the world at that time? Well, that's actually the time when the world, uh, will have an eight billion population. So in, in a year, there will be some surveillance device for one of every eight people in the world, and those are clearly not distributed uniformly. But what I think is very clear is that, actually, where populations projected to level off, this is a technology that proceeds very quickly, um, and I think it is, as others have noted, it's, it's, the, the technology is, is, is outpacing by a lot, uh, the regulation. It's almost entirely unregulated. Uh, so I think, in some ways, I don't want to lose us votes, but this is a very conservative proposal. This is, let's, let's be cautious, and it, it does show some leadership, and I hope the Commonwealth, uh, follows suit, um, and, and looks at something like North Hampton is considering here tonight, uh, for the state. So, all right, any other discussion? Okay, here are no other discussions, so we're ready for a roll call. Roll call, please, okay? Um, Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell, yes. Counsel Shara?
Yes.
Counsel Bidwell?
Yes.
That is approved. Move to suspend the rules, please. All right, so I take it Counselor Dwight has made a motion to suspend the rules.
I did.
Counselor LeBarge?
I did already.
She beat you to it. I'm already writing the initials. I think the motion is to suspend rules to allow for two readings in one night. Uh, is there any discussion on this motion? No discussion? Um, point of information, the, the rules provide for automatic rollover of ordinances, so any ordinance that is not approved tonight goes over to the new City Council, because there are members who are sponsoring it who will be a member of the new City Council as well as this one. So if, if we do not suspend the rules, the next council votes on it whenever the new council president schedules it for a vote, um, presumably early in the next session. And it would be just as, uh, a valid vote on second reading at that time as it would be tonight, so councilors understand. Um, so having said that, I mean, I, I have to say, as a, a strong supporter of this ordinance, I, I think I have to be consistent with what my position has been really my whole time as, as council president, and I hope largely consistent in the council. And unless there is a, a strong reason to, to suspend the rules, I'm really not in favor of doing that. Uh, and it's totally a legitimate thing to do, it's not wrong, it's up to the, the preference of the council. Uh, but, you know, I mean, the last time we had this debate, I mean, people talked about how, I mean, people cited the need for, um, a, a careful process, and I think this process has been careful and there's been lots of discussion, but, um, I think add in a bunch of, of caution and to be consistent in my position, I, I'm not in favor of having two readings tonight because really I don't see any cause to do so. Any comments on that? So I saw Counsel Dwight's finger go up and then Counsel...
Well, I'll defer to Counsel Bidwell and Klein, and then I'll...
Were you, okay, Counsel Bidwell?
Um, I have the, I share the same reservation as, as, as the council president. We, we all seem here to be in, in, in agreement, clearly, we've just voted all, all supportive, but I do think it's an important matter and worthy of, uh, of deliberation that would take place, uh, at a, at a second vote. And I think it would be, well, as, as an outgoing counselor, my, my instinct is, this is creating the law of the city, um, won't be, it could be reviewed at any time, but it's built in to be reviewed in three years. Why wouldn't, uh, we want the, the, the next council to, to have a chance to, to ponder this and, and to vote on it? Uh, I had thought of suggesting just deferring the whole thing to the next council for that reason, but the compromise is we take one vote, but then the new council has their bite at the apple. So I guess I would, uh, uh, vote, uh, uh, against the waiving of rules to allow a second reading tonight.
Any other discussion? Counselor Nash, would you seek, or so, Counselor Klein, and then we'll go to Counsel Dwight?
Um, I appreciate the concern. I have shared that concern when we, um, waive rules and, uh, take two votes. I think it's a really, uh, well-thought-out process to give people space and time to do more research, ask questions, to come back and, and do a second vote. This is a, a piece of legislation that I worked closely on and, um, and I'm really gratified to hear the support by and large. Um, I mean, we had a unanimous vote here, and, um, I, I think in this case, it's okay if we go ahead and we take two votes. I would love to leave the council, I mean, I'm not saying this, you don't have to do it to give me a gift, but, um, I would love, as I'm exiting the council, to be able to say that this is a, a piece of legislation that I saw from start to finish, um, pass. I have no doubt that incoming colleagues would, um, vote positively on this so that I know that it will, it will, um, you know, come to the same resolution ultimately. But, um, I think as a symbolic gesture, it would be lovely if we can part from the council, the five of us who are leaving, having made a vote and made this contribution to the city, this very important piece of legislation, um, that I think we, we need to see pass. So, um, I respectfully and with great understanding of why you're both hesitant, the two that have spoken so far, um, would vote to, um, waive rules and, uh, and have two votes on this.
Yeah, and great respect for that position as well, of course. So Counsel Dwight?
So, of course, uh, the two-reading phenomenon is unique to this body, actually, most of the, there are other mechanisms, it, it's basically a result of a misinterpretation. I don't mean to relitigate this, but the fact is the reason we had to, the, you, you just understood, the first reading is when the ordinance is introduced, that's the first reading, and the second reading comes with the vote. We do it differently, we've done it differently, no one really knows why or how, and when we discussed the rules, it was for the reason that Counsel O'Donnell referred, that it was, and what you just alluded to, which was the opportunity to digest it, if you will, and to have the public an opportunity, to give the public an opportunity to digest. And in, in that respect, that would be the only reason at this point that I would, that I would defer to that, um, to provide the public an opportunity, uh, to weigh in. So, I mean, it, the, part of the difficulty here is, as I said, this is, comes at the eleventh hour, hasn't really gotten vetted in the newspaper, hasn't been discussed on the street, has not been, uh, we, uh, councilors have not heard feedback. I've, other than people who've helped us develop this, I haven't heard anything from community members. But what compels me to ask for the second reading to complete it tonight is for the reason I stated before, was that, um, all of my colleagues, all of you have already participated in similar conversations about similar issues. Um, and there is an investment that I think translates to, uh, a knowledgeable and informed vote tonight, that, that, not to say that the folks coming in would be less informed, but there's a certain investment that you all have engaged in that I would like to see honored, that's all, and, and respected, and, and if you will, a, a parting gift as well for Counsel Klein, not the best reason to make law, I acknowledge, that's right. But still, at the same time, we have had two readings on financial orders that are significant, that the urgency comes because of certain deadlines that come that are out of our control. This deadline here came upon us somewhat out of our control. But there is no urgent deadline to have this put in place because, as I said, there was, the police chief has no intention currently investing in this software. So I will leave it to your conscience, I just, uh, I just argue both sides, so.
I was going to say, I, I agree with you, but I don't know what's...
See if I win.
Uh, with the counsel from Ward two, defer to the counsel from Ward four, was not...
Um, in addition to the extensive conversations that the three sponsors had and the conversations we had with the mayor and with the chief, um, I'll also note that this had a very robust conversation in legislative matters, and three of those four counselors are, um, are departing. So it, it feels almost a little bit unfair to me that sort of the, the main discussion, um, or one of the main discussions that was had, perhaps the new counselors wouldn't have been, um, privy to or, or had the experience of. So, um, I feel like that's sort of another reason why it feels like this, for me, it feels like this body should complete this vote.
Counsel Bidwell?
Um, I, I, I respect the desire of Counsel Dwight to somehow allow some coming a full circle and some, some connection between previous discussions on a, what I would argue is a totally different, totally different ordinance on a totally different matter, so I don't really see any, an, an, any need to round things out in that, in that way. This is its own important matter that, as far as I'm concerned, is unrelated to any previous ordinances that we've, we've debated. There isn't a sense of urgency, um, and I think it's a very telling point that, uh, if we regard this as an important ordinance, and we've all said it, it does, that there has been very, very little public attention to this. And I think it's, it's, it's deserving of, of more public attention, more opportunity for, for public input. So I'm, I'm, I'm even more convinced, as I think about it, that I would like to see a, a second vote deferred to the new council.
Oh, Counsel Nash?
So, I, I'm in favor of doing two readings tonight, um, that my sense is that this has been discussed and vetted, um, it has been in the newspaper, it was, you know, and that, um, and I think, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the feedback that we've gotten tonight, and, um, I'm comfortable with us moving forward with it.
Thank you, Counsel. Other, uh, Counsel Klein?
Um, one... One slight imperative here too is that the ACLU of Massachusetts, and I was remiss in not actually thanking Bill Newman, Attorney Newman, who is here, who really kind of shepherded this process and brought us to this ordinance, is really conducting a campaign across Massachusetts. There is a bill in the State House. We're trying by the end of 2019 to have as many cities and towns in Massachusetts pass ordinances along these lines so that we can really give a push to, at the state level, to creating a statewide ordinance. And we would be joining Cambridge and Brookline, who are, I'm not sure if they've passed them yet or they're exactly in the same place that we are and trying to pass similar ordinances. There are other towns and cities that are working on this. But we're trying to have as much kind of ferment around this as possible by the end of 2019. So it's another reason that I think it's important for us as a leader in these kinds of issues in North Hampton to consider passing this tonight into readings.
Other discussion on this question of suspension of rules? No other discussion?
Roll call, probably.
Yep, Chief, thanks.
Well, I'm calling for roll call, how's that?
Well, you have that right. No, it actually is clearer. So, yes, on the floor, made and seconded. And now we're going to start with Counselor Dwight. Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Hold on a second. Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarage?
Yes.
Counselor Murph?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell, no. Counselor Shara? Yes. Counselor Bidwell?
No.
We'll know. Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Carney, yes. So by a vote of 7 to 2, the rules are suspended?
Move second reading.
Counselor Dwight moves positive approval on second reading. Counselor Carney seconded. Discussion on second reading, please. I think just as a note for the future, one thing that might be interesting at the three-year mark before is, one's face is really one aspect of a broader subject. It's not really just about faces, it's about biometric data generally, indicators. And originally, I was going to make a suggestion for changes, but I'm just going to hold off because I'm satisfied with the great amount of thought that has gone into this on the part of sponsors and working departments and so on. But just for the record, I think it might be when this is revisited by the city council. Again, this is proceeding so quickly. It's not just your face, it's your gait and how you walk, it's genetic information, lots of other stuff. And I think this isn't the kind of thing that you need to future-proof. And so actually, it's nice that there's a review clause in here. I think that's helpful. So, anyway. Any other discussion on this second reading? Or Counsel Bidwell?
Just a procedural question.
Sure.
And this would be a Laura question, probably. Just what is the mechanism by which we satisfy ourselves that three years from now, this will appear on agenda? What's the three-year tickler system we have in?
Well, it's an interesting question. I mean, I'll do my best answer if I may. I mean, so for example, in the charter, we all know there's a 10-year review of the city charter. And that's big enough where we sort of remember it. What we almost forgot some time ago was the five-year review requirement for the code of ordinances. A member of Counselor Dwight was president and I was vice president. And we just, for some reason, realized, oh, we have to do this. And we did, I think, just in time or something, or maybe even just a little bit past. So I don't think there is, except for your Google Calendar, you know, where you can set a reminder for three years from now. I don't think there really is any mechanism beyond, I guess the next council president will have to review, you know, the landscape generally and make sure to remind the next council president to start.
Leave a note in the desk drawer.
Carve it in, yes.
We could ask Google to remind us. Google will remind us because they're observing us at all times.
Say, Alexa, remind us in three.
Google, wake me up.
Okay. Let's just say ask and answer, don't.
Don't anger our robotic overlords, please. So any other discussion?
Is anyone here committed to being here in three years? Raise your hand.
No.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
That's what they all say. All right, any other discussion? Let's have a roll call. And we will start with Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Klein, yes. Counselor LeBarage?
Yes.
LeBarage, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell, yes. Counselor Shara? Counselor Shara, yes. Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Bidwell, yes. Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Carney, yes. Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved unanimously on second reading. Sent to the mayor for his consideration.